Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Johnson.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are on to our first item, the swearing in of new police officers. And we have Chief Wise here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, citizens of Coon Rapids, as you know, it's our tradition that we do the badge pinning of new officers in front of our city council. So tonight I'd like to take a few minutes to formally introduce our newest police officers on their graduation from our field training program. Of course, it's worthwhile that we do this because it gets an opportunity for the citizens to meet them and see them and hear a little bit about them. Secondarily, I think even maybe more importantly in 2020, is that it's an opportunity for the new officers themselves to see how much support they enjoy from both the city council and feel it a little bit from the citizens too, because I know that we get great support from our council for me and for the work that's being done on the street here in our city. So tonight I'm introducing three new officers, Austin Albers, Stephanie Schweiger, and Willem Aldrich. Austin Albers, first, here to my immediate left, was born in North Dakota and moved to Coon Rapids when he was two. He attended and graduated from Coon Rapids High School. After high school, he enrolled at the University of North Dakota where he earned a BA in criminal justice. He subsequently enrolled in Hennepin Technical College where he received his law enforcement skills training. He worked a variety of part-time jobs before finding a place with Anoka County Corrections as a juvenile probation officer, which incidentally is a tough job when you're dealing with young people that are under a lot of stress. And it's the kind of experience that I like to hear about because I know when they're successful doing that, that they're successful at all those skills, those soft skills that we talk so much about, especially being patient. We hired him away from the county and now he works for us and we're happy to have him. Standing to his left is Stephanie Schweiger. She was born and raised in East Bethel here in Anoka County. She graduated from St. Francis High School with honors and was a member of the National Honor Society. She has a family connection with law enforcement with both her father and an uncle working in the profession. Her uncle is the St. Francis Police Chief who's an acquaintance and friend of mine, so it's kind of a cool thing. Stephanie enrolled at Mankato, or excuse me, Minnesota State Mankato, where she earned a BA in Corrections with a minor in psychology. You know, once again, we talk about those soft skills that are important to us. She subsequently received her law enforcement skills training at Hennepin Technical College. Stephanie also worked a number of part-time jobs before landing a position with Hennepin County where she first worked as a probation officer and then transferred to a corrections deputy. Again, her background there was a tough test, dealing with people and trying situations where you learn those verbal skills to address what are many times volatile situations. Again, it's a good crucible for preparing her to be here. And to her left is Willem Aldrich. Willem was born and raised in Duluth, Minnesota, where he graduated from Duluth East High School. Willem enrolled in Fond du Lac Tribal and Community College where he earned an AS degree in law enforcement. He also received his skill training there. William too worked part-time jobs, a number of part-time jobs, with one being with, that caught my attention when I looked through his background investigation, you'll figure out why immediately. He worked for Midwest Energy Resource, which was a coal processing facility in Superior, Wisconsin. The reason I bring up that job in particular, as in his background packet, our investigator made note of a conversation he had with one of Willem's former supervisors who said about Willem, quote, "He was a solid, hard-working young man who even got along with crusty old longshoremen." A sentence like that sounds like probably the highest praise one could receive working in a coal processing facility. His desire for police work was also fueled by his family, with his dad working a career as a deputy. And Willem went from coal to hospital security to us here at Coon Rapids. So as always, we're very happy to have Austin, Stephanie, and Willem become members of our department. Their first day of parole as patrol officer trainees was back in April, day one of which was masked in the midst of a pandemic. Quite a big challenge, but they faced that head-on from the very beginning. Since that time, they've been trained and evaluated on a daily basis. They're pushed to excel at meeting the needs of our community in particular. We want them to know what it's like to serve Coon Rapids and the special needs for our city. Our training program is designed to be an extremely stressful process. To be certain, we've hired the right people and in these three, we believe we've done just that, which leads us to where we are now. So Austin, Stephanie, and Willem, tonight you're officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we removed your training badges, as you've now earned your permanent badges of 169, 170, and 171 respectively. And I always say the same things. There's two things about these badges that I want you to remember. First, it represents the faith and the trust that your peers have in you that invested so much time and effort into getting to where you are today. But second and most importantly, you never forget that this badge belongs to the citizens and they're entrusting you with it. And it's a somber honor that you have. And we appreciate the sacrifice you're willing to make to wear it and trust that you will do your best to serve our community. So with that, you've become members of a proud organization, Dedicated Professionals. And on behalf of that organization, I welcome you into our police department family and know that your peers and colleagues will do everything they can to help you all be successful. So with that, the first pinning will be of Austin and it'll be his father, Dwight Albers. So actually, I have you step to the center here. Yeah, if you have a thing over there, the ones, or actually come on over here for a second. All right, and our second badge pinning will be Stephanie. And Stephanie will be pinned by her father also. All right, Dan, if you'll stay over here, too. And then third will be Willem and his mother Nancy Peterson will come and, yeah. All right, Mom, if you'll stay here with him too. And Mr. Mayor, if you would be kind enough to do the honor and swear on these five hands, you all.
We're going to do it a little bit different tonight. We're going to go everybody at one time. So when I say I state your name, actually state your name. Okay? All right. All right. If you would raise your right hands. And here we go. I state your name.
I, Willem Aldrich.
Very good.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
In the county of Anoka.
In the county of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. I can't imagine how full the chambers would be with three officers being sworn in pre-COVID.
It's way too many when it's four, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Congratulations all. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess they're here for them.
Anybody here for open mic? All right. Second item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the October 7th, 2020 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second, by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We have four items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Stress Reduction Specialties LLC, 535 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Suite 101. Rebecca Lynn Yokum of Stress Reduction Specialties LLC, Doing Business as Essentially Healthy, has submitted an application for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She has paid the background investigation and license fee, and she has also provided proof of the required liability insurance, and is in the process of going through the police department's background investigation. We're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Stress Reduction Specialties LLC, Doing Business as Essentially Healthy, located at 535 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Suite 101, contingent upon a successful background investigation. Next item on the consent agenda, which is item four on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 20-93, approving a joint powers agreement access to BCA data. The city attorney's office currently uses the BCA, which is Bureau of Criminal Apprehension e-charging process, to charge criminal complaints. The state of Minnesota and the city had previously entered into two agreements, an amendment to the Criminal Justice Data Network, CJDN, subscriber agreement, and joint powers agreement authorizing the use of e-charging by the city. These agreements expire at the end of 2020, so we're looking to enter into a new five-year agreement with the state to allow continued access to the BCA e-charging process. The agreements set the standards and policies the city must follow in order to access the BCA's e-charging system. So this is a two-part. We're looking to adopt Resolution 20-93, approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement for CJDN access, and approving the court data services subscriber amendment. And secondly, to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute the BCA joint powers agreement and amendment to the CJDN subscriber agreement. Anytime there's law enforcement, it's always lots of initials. All right. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item five on this evening's agenda, is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with 211 CRW LLC. At its regular meeting held January 21st, 2020, the city council approved an amendment to APUD to demolish the Famous Davs located at 3211 Northdale Boulevard and redevelop the site with a multi-tenant commercial building and a bank. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to enter onto the property to maintain the water main system for public safety purposes, including hydrant flushing twice per year and exercising of the gate valves. The water main system within the site is considered private and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with 211 CRW LLC for the redevelopment of the Famous Davs site at 3211 Northdale Boulevard. And then the last item on our consent agenda is to approve the recycling center staffing agreement with Atlas Staffing Incorporated. The Coon Rapids Recycling Center contracts staffing for its daily needs at the facility. An annual contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated was approved by the city council November 6th, 2019. Atlas has proven to be a great fit at the recycling center and staff would like to renew the contract from November 1st, 2020 through November 1st, 2021. Aside from the contract term, there are no contract revisions. So we are looking to approve the contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated for contracted staffing at the recycling center. And that was the last item on our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections or questions? One thing highlighted, I wanted to, oh, that was a note to myself. All right. Hearing no discussion then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. And we are up to item seven, which is to consider introduction of ordinances revising fees for 2021. Mr. Stemwaddle, you want to hit the highlights of that one?
Sure. Mayor and council, this is our annual update to fees. These are the fees that are required to be updated by ordinance. At the next meeting, you'll also see on your agenda the fees that are updated by resolution. So we start the process for these ones a little sooner than that. You'll note that most of the fees included before you are remaining flat, and that was anticipated during our budget process, given some of the economic conditions out there to try to maintain where a lot of those fees were. Some of them are driven by outside factors that we were required to increase as it relates to license fees and service fees that are handed down by the state and so forth. And then finally, the ordinance fees related to billing inspections, there's really just the one change, and actually it's a reduction to match a similar fee structure for similar inspections. So with that, this is really just the introduction tonight. If there are any questions, of course, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, you'll see this for formal consideration at your first meeting in November.
Councilmember Demmer.
So obviously, none of us can predict what's going to happen over the next year. I know at the end of this year, we did some rebates back to people who were closed. I was looking at some of these, and one of them specifically was the on-sale wine license, where there's a seating capacity of 35, but no more than 99, pays less than with a seating capacity of 100 or more. If we operate a substantial portion of the year with an enforcement from above to limited seating capacity, will they be charged at the capacity their building can hold via fire marshal or charged at the capacity their building can hold via executive order?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, I think we would obviously use our good judgment on that. We'd expect to communicate with the business owner about what their plans are based on the governor's order at the time, so.
And I think I would be suggesting that at some point, if things change mid-year, we do some sort of prorating or whatever. But you know, if we're charging them for 100 and they can only have 25, then it just feels a little weird. Then there was one in here for pawn shop transaction fee, which is they get charged for modem reporting? Are we still doing that?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yes, Mayor and council.
Okay. Great.
All right. Any other questions about this one? All right, then if not, we will consider an ordinance to revise certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1st, 2021 introduced, and an ordinance establishing permit and inspection fees for the Building Inspections Division effective January 1st, 2021, also introduced. And item eight is to consider Resolution 20-91, authorizing the EDA to expend funds for nonprofit grants. Somebody want to, Mr. Brown, you look like you're ready to do a presentation or something.
I will stand over here since we ran out of seating otherwise. Yeah, so the council's asked to consider a couple items as part of this item. As you remember, back in August and September, the council created guidelines for both the business relief grant program and the nonprofit relief grant program, which are intended to assist both businesses and nonprofit organizations in the city with pandemic-related expenses. The programs are funded from the city's Federal Cares Act allocation. So the first item is kind of a housekeeping item. We did the same thing with the business grant program, but since the nonprofit program was created more recently, we're simply asking that you consider a resolution that delegates administration of that program to the EDA, just because providing financial assistance is just better suited for, based on the EDAs for Economic Development Authority's powers as opposed to the city's. The second item we're asking you to consider is an amendment to the business relief grant program guidelines. And in addition to what is stated in the memo, we'd also like you to consider the same amendment for the nonprofit grant programs guidelines, and that is authorizing the executive director of the EDA to allow for increased grant amounts to those applicants who had demonstrated greater expenditures than the initial grant amount. So for the business grant program, we allowed grants of up to $15,000 for those businesses that employ up to 20 employees. Those businesses that have between 20 and 100 employees are eligible for up to $30,000. So we basically, we're proposing now, now that we have a better handle on what we're actually going to be spending on these programs, is that those amounts are increased to $20,000 and $35,000. And the maximum grant amount for the nonprofit program would also be $20,000 instead of 15. So basically, we're looking at allowing for up to an additional $5,000 to those applicants who demonstrate eligible expenses. As of today, on the business program, we've, and that application window was close to a month ago now, but we received approximately 90 applications. As of today, approximately 65 of those are approved, ready to go. We have not yet communicated with the applicants, but plan to do so yet this week, once we have a good handle on where we're going to end up. Of those remaining 25, some are still in the review process. They had to provide some supplemental information. We do expect to fund a large number of those. There were some, though, that were ineligible, and also a handful, about six or so, we simply haven't heard from when they were asked to provide some additional information. So we'll be following up with those. We definitely want to make sure that everyone who is eligible is receiving funding. So all told, we're at between about 1.1 and 1.2 million committed to that program. We had originally planned on about 1.6 million. So with those additional funds, we will likely get a little bit closer to that 1.6 million. On the nonprofit program, we did only receive six applications, so the total amount going toward that program will be around $100,000. So we can certainly answer any questions, but ask you to consider that resolution and also that amendment to the program guidelines.
So, Mr. Brown, our next council meeting isn't until November 4th. Is there any modification that you think we might need to make or any, for the nonprofit one, I guess I'm wondering about? Because I don't remember what the overall deadline is for spending the money, but if all of a sudden tomorrow you go, hey, you know what, if all we do is tweak this one thing on the nonprofit grants, you know, it would open this up more. Is there something we need to consider? Is that a question? I think it's a question.
Mayor and council, I can attempt to answer that. The city must spend the funds by November 15th. And so the timeline's getting fairly tight to make adjustments here in the last few weeks. You know, if there were something, in terms of receiving new applications, because we have to do some due diligence on the backend, so I think we'd have to determine that pretty quickly. I suppose if council wanted to provide the executive director of the EDA to consider appeals to that application period, there might be something we could try to determine here fairly quickly. But really, if we don't get those, that information in soon, like in the next week, we're not going to have time to both do the due diligence period and issue the checks before November 15th.
And I don't know what numbers we were anticipating, but it just seems like six isn't very many, considering how many nonprofits we have in town. And I'm just wondering if there was some stumbling block that we missed, that we put in there that we missed. I don't know.
Have we been contacted by any nonprofits, you know, saying that they would have liked to have applied, but because of some reason? You know, if we haven't heard from anybody, I don't know how we could try and change it if we don't know.
No, we did not receive any calls or emails with questions about the program. Obviously, the application was pretty straightforward. It was a one-page online form. With the business program, I know we got a handful of questions. With the nonprofit program, we really didn't get any questions.
There was something that clearly eliminated everybody right away, and I'm just wondering what that was. But, okay.
I would, I would agree.
You're thinking of a worker on there, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Trying to. Always trying.
It would be fair if you did want to amend that amendment language to allow some additional flexibility. We could kind of talk internally whether it makes sense to somehow open that application window again for a very brief period of time or consider what would work. As Mr. Stemwaddle said, we are in a bit of a time crunch on spending these funds and we'll have to make some decisions within, in the next week or so.
Okay. Mayor and council, I guess what I would suggest then is if, you know, we weren't aware of the potential issue that people might have been disqualified for some reason, so we could probably in the next day or two reach out to some nonprofits just to understand why they may not have chosen to submit an application. And if there seems to be some glaring reason why that occurred, then I think it would probably make sense for council to grant some flexibility on that date, which was October 19th, at sort of our discretion. And then, you know, if they provide the information in a very quick manner, we could probably still include them. I would say beyond some glaring reason, then we might want to just continue on the current path and not open it up again.
Okay. Is there a way that we could do that, just to allow a little bit of lateral movement for, I mean, I think that's a good idea, changing that date?
Yeah, I would suggest that as a part of your, a part of the motion or as an additional motion to these approvals, assuming they are approved, that you provide staff the flexibility to consider additional nonprofit grant applications if staff determines there was an issue with the application period or requirements, something along those lines, just so it's on the record that the council agreed to allow staff to consider new applications if they felt it was a good idea.
Is that reasonable, or?
Yeah. And so to me, I think that is generally a good idea. The question that I would have is, you know, I think there were 60-some nonprofits that we initially communicated to. I would want to make sure that if we are going to reach out, that we each reach out equitably and have to get to everybody and get everybody the chance versus just piecemealing, you know, hey, what did you hear, what did you hear, you know, to make sure that if we are expanding, that everybody gets that same opportunity.
Sure. Mayor and council, I would agree. I mean, that if we found some reason to reopen the application, that we'd want to let everybody know, hey, you've got 48 hours to get the application in and here's what's changed. So if that were the case, I think we would want to do that, just so it's a fair playing field, that, you know, we didn't hear from one nonprofit and just dealt with them directly. But again, I think that would be under sort of the assumption that if we call several of them and there's a consistent theme about something that we didn't think of that was unintentional, okay, that makes sense, let's open it up. But I'd say if that isn't the case, then we'd probably just leave it alone.
Yep.
And, Mr. Mayor? To that, to that end with potentially that, a little bit of flexibility, extra language, would that also apply in your mind to a business grant? So we've got those six businesses. So we've got those six businesses that haven't necessarily been communicated to, or we think that they are not responding. If there was some error in communication, would we be flexible there as well to pull in their information?
Mayor and Council, those, the six that Councilmember Geisler's referring to, we're still in communication with them, and they're still eligible. They got their initial application in on time, and were asked for some supplemental information after the fact, and if they give us that supplemental information, really, in the next couple of weeks here, we're going to be able to work with them to give them their grant, assuming they're eligible. So they're already in queue, we just need those final few details to approve it, and as long as they give us those details, we're good to go. They don't need to have an extension on the timeline.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have a hard date for them and be extending it for the nonprofits, so.
Councilmember Demmer, if you still have some?
I was going to make the motions, but I was first going to ask if it should be three separate motions, because that's sort of how it feels.
Councilmember Demmer, obviously, it's your motion, so you can make it as easy fit, but I think the three sounds good.
Yeah, okay. So everyone knows it's going to be three, and you don't think I missed something. All right, so move to approve Resolution 20-91 authorizing the Economic Development Authority to expend dollars from the city's Federal Cares Act allocation for the purpose of providing grants to nonprofit organizations. That's one.
That's one.
So you need a second.
Oh, oh, we can do all three together, though.
Well, if you want. This might be the best way to do it, actually.
All right, okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Mr. Stemwell?
And I just want to make clear for the record, or the intent of Councilmember Demmer, that that would include providing the authority to increase the amount of the eligible grants from 15 to $20,000, assuming the nonprofit provides that.
So that's where I was, so what I was worried about was that this one had to be a resolution, because it's a written resolution, and that those other things are amendments, and so I had to do them. That is number three, once the resolution had passed. So that was why I was doing it as three. So we passed the resolution, and then we amended. I don't know if that's right.
Does that work?
There you go.
Okay.
We're good. Robert's rules.
Sounds like Wade's rules.
Yeah. It just seemed like a weird "and also" to me, since they are both resolutions.
Fair enough.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gushkovjak?
I think before we do that, I do think that if it's tied into increasing and amending the Coon Rapids Business Grant Guidelines and increasing that 5,000, if you feel there was something in the application process for the nonprofits that exempted a lot of people or ruled them out, wouldn't we want to make sure that that's cleared up first before we amend and say we're going to give higher amounts to the business? Because we want to get to the 1/6, of course. We want to try to get this money out into the community, but if, if there, of the 65 nonprofits, if only six came in, and actually, there might be 30 that are eligible, we might want to think about using those funds before we amend and go higher on the business grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we still have the money, though, don't we, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, correct. We actually, we didn't set a hard budget for the nonprofit grant program. I think we were anticipating more like 20 applications would come in, and that we'd end up, I don't recall, it was between 500 and $600,000, something like that. So with six, there's still quite a bit of capacity, and I think as part of that approval, we did say that the city manager had the ability to use additional CARES Act funds within sort of the same ballpark of that allocation to make more awards if needed, just because we knew if we got, if we're at 550,000, we only budgeted 500, well, there's no reason to come back to council, because the money's already there. So I think we're in good shape, that if we found a handful more, or even, you know, 10 more applications that came in, we're still okay within what we estimated as a budget for CARES Act, and that really is just, was our rule of thumb for planning purposes. There's no hard and set reason we couldn't go more than that if needed.
Okay, that makes sense, that it was two separate funding sources.
Yeah, it was.
It's not just a single. Okay, thank you.
We're still in discussion, you know that. Okay. Any other discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, the more I think about it, maybe this one can just take both of them, so we don't have to do that again. So, move to amend the Coon Rapids Business Relief Grant Program guidelines to allow for increased grant amounts subject to availability of funds and demonstration of eligible expenditures by applicants, and also move to amend the Coon Rapids Nonprofit Relief Grant Program guidelines to allow for flexibility for deadlines, enabling the staff to reach out to businesses or nonprofits, and also flexibility for eligibility requirements.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Did you get that one?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Deadlines and eligibility.
Got it.
Okay.
All right. Motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Demmer, repeat that word for word.
Councilmember Wells would like you to.
Too bad.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gushkovjak?
Maybe a question for Matt. Of those 90 applications, 65 okay for the, for the business, do, are you seeing that most of them clearly demonstrated that they have reimbursable expenses over that 15 and over that 30 mark? Or does our administrator going to have to kind of reach back out to them, and how does that work?
Yeah, we believe that we will not have to reach back out to the businesses. There were some in the 10 to 15 neighborhood that had expenses that were under the amount, under the original amount, they simply didn't have enough expenses. The, most of the remainder clearly had expenses in an amount that well exceeded, that well exceeded the original grant amount.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that if they applied for 15, we're not going to automatically send them 20, and then have, put them in a position where, oh, we're not eligible anymore and payback or clawback or whatever.
Or, I think the other question would be is, anybody who said, well, the program was only for 15 and only submitted things up to that dollar amount, where they could potentially have had other expenses that they didn't give us, because they stopped providing information, because there was at the limit, so.
Mayor and Council, we, Mayor and Council, in that regard, staff did discuss that scenario, because there were some organizations that were, you know, right over the $15,000 amount. We did ask for kind of the full picture of their expenses and revenues, and then what those costs were, so we felt like upfront, we did ask for that information, and in only maybe one or two cases, it seemed like maybe the organization was targeting that amount. You know, and I think at this point, it might be difficult to go back and kind of have them redo it under the timeline. So I guess it was our suggestion that we, you know, whatever they sent us, we'd base the potential for an increased amount on that amount, and I guess if they only showed an extra $500, and that's all they got, but they had a lot more than that, that, you know, really, you know, they have an opportunity to provide that information. You know, if it seems like there's additional information that we could get, we could try to seek that out, but there was very few in that category, if, maybe just one, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open mic, thank you, Mr. Brown. We're at the open mic portion of the meeting. We only have one candidate. Pat, you got anything for us? Nope, good, okay. All right. I don't have any repeats, repeats, reports on previous open mics, and we are at other business.
Chief Wise.
Chief Wise.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly mention that this Saturday is National DEA Drug Takeback Day. So this is the one where they advertise to the public that now would be the time to drop off your prescription medication, been thinking about it. So when you see that commercial or advertisement or ear-by-voice, look through your medicine cabinet, don't throw it away in the trash, bring it to the police department on Saturday between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and a friendly officer will be there to receive it, and make sure that it's properly recycled.
They don't even have to get out of their car, right? I mean, they go right out to the car and grab it when they pull up?
Officer will be right there, and actually, I guess I misspoke, not recycled, destroyed, incinerated. Recycled, that's a careless word, so.
It's a new department, we resort that stuff.
There's so much pressure talking here, so.
All right, thank you. So that's this coming Saturday, whatever that date is.
The 24th, October 24th, 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m.
All right, very good. All right, so I guess I, I feel a need to mention that former city council member Bruce Sanders passed away this month, October 9th. Bruce was born in Hibbing, and he served in both the United States Air Force and the Minnesota Air National Guard. He worked for the city of Maple Grove, and then he continued to serve as a member of the Coon Rapids City Council, I think for 12 years?
Yes.
12 years? He was also the commander of the Coon Rapids American Legion Club, a dedicated father, loving husband, served on several of our commissions, including our planning commission, civil service commission, I'm not sure what else. But Bruce was, Bruce was on the city council when I got sworn in for the city council, and I came around and sat down in the chair, and it was about six inches off the floor, because Bruce had lowered it for me. So, that's welcome to the council, but great, great man. And one of my favorite open, grand openings was Warner Stallions doing that with Bruce. We went there, they had the barbecue, they had the accordion player, and Bruce and I sang just about every polka the guy could play. Bruce knew all the lyrics. But very good guy, and a very big loss for our city, and king of the pickleball, you know, if there was ever any talks about parks, Bruce was there. Well, what about the pickleball courts? So, I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to mention, but I wanted to make sure we got that in. All right? Other business?
Do we want to ask, or clerk on, well, we can talk, we can talk about plowing, and then, or?
Want to go first with the plowing?
Then elections.
Yeah.
Ms. Landsmeyer?
Mayor and Council, we are open here at City Hall for absentee voting in person, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. We are busy, but we're managing well. I will say, I looked at the numbers this afternoon, we are 30% voted already.
Wow.
And that number will continue to climb.
For the people at home, can you explain what changes on the 27?
Yes, right now, we are in the, Councilmember Demmer, we are in the absentee envelope process, where you need to fold it, put it in envelopes, and leave it here at City Hall. On Tuesday, October 27th, we switch to direct balloting, where you can place it in the machine yourself. So come see us, we're ready.
And, Ms. Landsmeyer, is it just Monday through Friday, or are you going to add a Saturday as times as well?
Councilmember Geisler, we do have one Saturday, Halloween, October 31st, from 10 to 3.
All right. Mr. Hammer, do we get those, did we have those plows ready?
Mayor and Council, the sun is shining, the grass is white at bunker hills, we're all out on the tee boxes, and we're ready to go. I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson's not here, that's the wrong update. Yes, we, we don't have all equipment prepared, but we're ready to go. Stephanie Ring, just recently during the council meeting, provided the latest update. We were going to come back a little bit later than normal, but we're not going to have a repeat of prior year, where you get that first slop and you get the ruts, and so we're starting at 2:30 a.m., full plow, whole city. We're going to get it done this time, so we've exceeded what we needed, the conditions aren't great, we've been out there on all the mains up until rush hour, so those are in good shape. We got the parking lot done for the big crowd that we had tonight, but we will be back at it at 2:30, all staff, all cul-de-sacs, all roads, it's all going to get done. I looked at the forecast and said, you're not looking at a 40 for another couple of weeks, so it's not worth it, and it'll be challenging in that there's some recon not done yet, the final lift of asphalt isn't, we've got some high iron, it'll, it'll be a challenge, but we're gonna, we're gonna do it.
Mr. Hammer, what are they doing to the new bridge on Hanson? Looks like they busted out the whole sidewalk on the northwest side. Was it defective or something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I won't get into all the details, it's a punch list item, there was an error with construction, we decided we're going to get it done right, and so we're just, the timing wasn't perfect, certainly. I talked to them earlier about having a detour up, if that's not already there for the pedestrians, to make sure that they can get to one side or the other, but yes, that's all the contractor's responsibility, they're taking care of that.
Okay. I figured the contractor, I was just wondering what happened, but, okay.
Just a couple more brief updates for you. Riverdale Drive, we had the issue a couple weeks back, as far as the road closure. Considering where we are right now, we don't have that final lift of asphalt in. Right now, tentatively, we're planning to do that early Friday morning. All the businesses will receive notifications tomorrow, it's just, there's too much traffic going in and out of there to do that under, under traffic. So we're proposing for a brief closure Friday morning. Businesses should be receiving their notifications tomorrow. We'll see what the weather does and how the contractor follows through, but they know we're not doing that again, so that, that could be a short closure, say 7 to 9, 7 to 10, Friday morning, but there's not a lot of time left, and so we're going to, we're going to take a run at it.
Thank you. I was out there today, and actually, the traffic was moving pretty good through that, the four-way stop there, that works, that seems to work pretty well there. But what I also noticed was, at Walmart, there was the old motorhome park there, and then there was the camper trailer that was literally not even hooked to anything, it was, somebody just dropped it there. You're going, what is this? So, just in case anybody gets by there, I don't know. Other business? Really? Nothing?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Wells, second by Kicker, to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.